6:01 PM on December 6, 2022.
This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order.
This meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Seeing none, I note for the record participating this evening are myself, Elizabeth Klein, acting as Chair, and Board Member Joseph Fisher. William Ramsey is traveling for work and unable to attend. I ask everyone to stand and face the flag of our nation for the Pledge of Allegiance if you are willing and able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Joe, are you ready to proceed?
I believe we have the November 29 minutes before us.
Yes.
I am ready to proceed, and I would make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 29, 2022.
Second, by roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Liz? Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the FY23 Tax Classification Hearing. Do you have a quorum? You do? Okay. Do you want to call the meeting to order? Chrissy? Hi, Chrissy.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, and thank you for that yes call, the meeting to order, the Board of Assessors, 6:03 PM.
Okay. And then Erin, you're going to present to us?
Yes.
Excellent.
So I'm here to present the classification hearing for the Town of Hingham. Just to give you some information, the classification hearing does not determine the tax rate for the town, nor does it determine how much money can be raised. A split tax rate will not increase revenue for the town, and a split tax rate shifts some of the tax burden from all residential properties onto all commercial, industrial, and personal property accounts. It's Michelle.
Does Michelle join us?
Yes.
She's homesick.
So, the purpose of the classification hearing is to decide whether to shift the tax burden between the property classes. The classification does not change the total levy for the community, it simply determines the share to be borne by each class. So, the next slide, I've already actually reviewed that information, I'm a little out of order. So, the next slide will show you the total values by property type, so this slide illustrates the total valuation of the town. The residential value makes up about 89%, the commercial 7%, industrial 2%, and personal property 1% of our total value. The next slide shows sort of an exact percentage of each class, showing that the residential and open space make up 89.27%, and the total of the commercial, industrial, and personal property make up 10.73%. So, the next slide gives you some split rate information in the state of Massachusetts. So, in fiscal 2022, 108 of our 351 communities had a split tax rate. 96% of those communities had a split tax rate for more than 10 years. The average residential percentage for the split tax rate communities is 71.2%, and the commercial-industrial percentage, personal property percentage, is 29.65%. The average residential percentage for single-rate towns is 88.69%, where the commercial, industrial, and personal property percentage is 11.36%. Of the 27 cities and towns in Plymouth County, five have a split tax rate, and that average percentage of these five communities is 74.5%, 0.51%, and the average commercial percentage is 25.49%. So, the next slide gives us some comparable or benchmark towns, tax rate comparison. So, the light blue highlighted are split-rate towns, and the average commercial-industrial personal property for these towns is about 26%, and the light green highlighted towns are single-rate towns, and their average commercial-industrial personal property is a little over 8%. So, the next slide shows our average property values in town. The total increase in values are about 19%, single-family 20%, condos 6%, and commercial and industrial went up about 14% from last year to this year. Since fiscal 2020, the single-family value has increased a little over 29%, condos about 17%, and commercial-industrial about 14%. So, the next slide shows our total values by property type, broken down into single-family, condo, multi-house, two-family, three-family. So, the total valuation for this year is over is $9,570,758. Last year it was just over $8 billion, which indicates a 19% total increase this year, which is one of the biggest increases in total valuation that we've seen. This is due to, obviously, market conditions, as well as we just completed our five-year certification review, so that was an intensive look that the DOR took at the entire town, which indicates, based on sales last year, our values are going up, not just in Hingham, but throughout all of Massachusetts. So, the next slide will show the impact of a tax shift. So, if we were projected, if I use a projected tax rate of $10.02, this shows as the shift increases from 10 to 50%, the residential rate decreases, oh, sorry, actually, that's not right, as the shift increases for the commercial, industrial, and personal property, the residential will save, depending on the shift, the highest shift would result in commercial properties paying about 50% more in taxes, and the residential parcels would save a little over 6.5, or just under 6.5%, I should say. So, some of the discussion that we had when we looked at the tax shift is what makes Hingham special, and we think it's the downtown communities, or the downtown businesses, I should say, and where most of those businesses are not owner-occupied, shifting would really place a burden on this commercial base, and so that's a lot of the discussion that we had, as much as we would like to see an increase in our commercial base before we talked about or thought about looking at a shift. So, in the Town of Hingham for fiscal year 2022, the residential class is about 89%, the commercial, industrial, and personal property is about 11%. Anecdotal evidence suggests that towns whose commercial base is between 20% and 25% cautiously begin to consider a split tax rate. Once a community decides to split the rate, it's very difficult to go back to a single rate without placing the burden back on the residential class. A split tax rate may be considered anti-business and may discourage businesses from locating in the community. So, a residential factor of one will result in a single tax rate, adopting a single tax rate is consistent with all past practices. So, the Board of Assessors met on December 1, 2022, they discussed and reviewed the classification issues and options. A motion was made, and the vote was unanimous to recommend to the Select Board a residential factor of one, which is a single tax rate for fiscal year 2023.
Excellent, thank you, Erin. Josh, did you want to add anything?
I think the only thing I would add is, you know, given, and it was presented up there with the slides of what our comparable towns are, maybe next year we should start looking at, you know, where we fall in that list, because it looks like we'll probably have one of the lowest tax rates for both commercial and residential in our comparable towns, if not in all of Massachusetts. You know, the final rate will come out sometime this week, but it's probably going to be close to what's presented here. I think being consistent with what we've been doing the past six months, we want to kind of dig into the numbers a little bit more and really figure out the impact granularly on businesses now that we can get the data, and really look at what the impact would be if we decide going forward. You know, we talked about, even if we made the change this year with some more relief on the residential properties, the impact with the things voted on the special town meeting this past month, and potentially an override in April, those wouldn't even hit until 2024, so it may be prudent just to still vote one-to-one and then maybe take a look a little more in depth next year.
Chrissy, do you want to add anything?
I wouldn't be adding anything new, I would just reiterate that we had a very robust discussion, and at the end of the day, we didn't see anything compelling to change it at this point. But like Josh said, we can always look into it further, and we will continue to, you know, look at it every single year, but it just didn't seem right this year again.
Great, thank you, understood, and I know this is something that we do evaluate every year, and it sounds, you answered my question, Erin, I was going to ask kind of, at what point does it make more sense to reevaluate, and it sounds like that 20% to 25% range for commercial, and I also wanted to make sure that we considered the potential override, so thank you, I'm glad that was part of the discussion, and certainly might be more relevant for FY24. And I know you mentioned we've gone through a reevaluation for the entire town, so that's important for people to understand. Do you have any questions, Joe?
I do have questions and comments. First, great work, this is, you know, it's not a five-second job, and what you've produced really shows the effort, so thank you. I'm a little cautious about using the comparable towns for this analysis, that list was really for, in terms of salaries, it's not for this purpose. I'm looking at the, quite frankly, looking at Plymouth County, where you've got, you know, less than 20% of the towns have a split rate, and that's sort of more, I think, a more relevant group to be looking at in terms of how towns are treating this issue. It's always tempting to want to shift the burden to commercial properties, particularly since commercial owners may not be voters, but it really, I think, would change the character of the town until we reach a point where we have a greater percentage, and I think there are certain areas of town that maybe, if there was a way to do it, to increase the rate, just that area, but I don't think there is. So, I really applaud the decision that you've made here, I think it makes the most sense. I do have one question, there are some properties that are split-use, both commercial and residential. If there was a split rate, how would the rate apply in those instances? Because there's some commercial use and some residential use in the same building. Do you know how that works?
I don't, I would have to investigate, so when we look at a mixed-use property, it's partially commercial and then partially-
Residential.
Residential, so I believe that if you did shift it, the portion that's residential would get this tax rate, and the portion that's commercial would get this tax rate-
But there's only one tax rate for the building, it's not two different rates. I mean, the building gets one tax bill.
Yeah, I would have to look into that, I honestly don't know.
Because I think-
That's a great question.
And there are a number of properties in the downtown area that are like that, because I know the Planning Board have been looking to encourage residences on the top floor, businesses on the ground floor, so I just don't know how this would impact those types of buildings.
Yeah, that's certainly something I can look into and get back to you.
But in terms of the analysis you've done and the result you've produced, I fully support it, thank you.
Great, thanks.
I'll just add that I asked her to put the comparable assets, I mean, towns in there, and I just was trying to be consistent with all the presentations that have been presented over the past couple of years with the comparable towns, so I just wanted our department to be consistent with what has been presented-
Yes.
...for the last couple of years.
Thank you.
And Joe brought up a good point that I think we get asked about a lot, is if the commercial tax rates could be separated, so for, as an example, the downtown small businesses have one rate, and the large commercial entities have another, and I don't think that's possible, but just to reiterate, because that question certainly comes up.
It's not possible, there is a small commercial exemption, but from what I understand, a lot of the businesses wouldn't benefit, it's more the owners of the property. So, for instance, unless the owners trickle down to the businesses themselves, so they would get a tax break, not necessarily paying it forward to who's occupying the property.
Okay, interesting. Okay, excellent, well, thank you for all of this work, and I know you go through a tremendous amount of analysis every year, so thank you. Any questions? Anyone else? Anyone in the public? No? Okay, you ready to make a motion?
I am, but before, Tom or Art, did you have anything you wanted to add on this?
I do not.
No, I'm happy with the recommended solution of not splitting the tax rate.
So, with that, I would like to make a motion to adopt a residential factor of one, a single tax rate for fiscal year 2023.
Second, by roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Liz? Aye. Motion carries? Thank you, thank you both, thank you, Erin. Yes. Chrissy, do you want to adjourn? You're welcome to stay, but-
Yes, thank you. Motion to adjourn, Board of Assessors meeting at 6:19, all in favor, or, I mean, a motion, sorry, Josh.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, 6:19.
All right. Second, all in favor, I'll do roll call like you did, Chrissy, aye, Josh?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
All right, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin, huge thank you, as always, to Erin, everybody on the team, and the office.
Yes, sorry, Randy, I didn't see you there, thank you.
That's correct, I'm on the phone, yeah, sorry.
But we still can't see you.
I still can't see you, but, thank you.
Thanks.
And Randy's girls are with us, perfect.
That's cute.
Okay, all right, next, are you ready to move on? Next item on the agenda are the FY24 Department Budget Requests, so we're going to keep Erin in the seat up here.
All right, I am Erin Welch, I'm here to present the Assessor's Budget for this year. So, the role of the Assessor's Office is to provide financial stability by fairly and equitably determining and assessing all real and personal property at its full and fair market value as of January 1 of each year. The office administers all tax data, mapping records, motor vehicle and BODEX size, personal and motor vehicle abatements, betterments, and exemptions. We also implement policy decisions and directions of the Board of Assessors. So, the next slide shows our benchmarks, so the department consists of three full-time and two part-time employees, who assess over 8,800 real property accounts with a total assessed value of more than $9 billion. 400 personal property accounts with an assessed value of over $128 million, administers excise tax for close to 25,000 motor vehicles, and over 1,450 boats. In fiscal year 2022, we processed 49 abatement applications and 184 exemption applications. So, the next slide shows our key initiatives. This is our second year that we offered the Senior Means Real Estate exemption for fiscal year 2022, or since fiscal year 2022. There was an outreach effort to reach more seniors who were eligible, we used social media, television, targeted mailings, outgoing calls, and increased our participation in the exemption program by 300%. We continued our collection of data by our in-house quality inspector for fiscal 22, continuing a greater control of quality and frequency of inspections, completed our fiscal year 23 revaluation certification with the DOR. Our next revale will be in fiscal 28, so in five years. And we continued our cyclical inspections to comply with and meet the Department of Revenue guidelines, so by the end of this year, we should have looked at over 400 properties, and the DOR requires that we look at every house in town once every 10 years. So, the following slide shows our salaries and expenses. The office consists of three full-time employees and five part-time employees, including our three board members. The total for our expenses is $63,658, of which are the revale services, which is Vision and RRC. Vision, we use to look at our residential properties, and RRC looks at our personal property accounts. That is our biggest item, which totals $52,000. This is up a little bit from two years ago, due to the contracts actually going up in the past couple of years, and that's all I have.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Erin. I know you've certainly been busy, your normal work, plus the revale this year, and I know we've talked about this before, but so impressed by the outreach and the, just the 300% increase in people that applied for the Senior Means Tax Exemption, so we're thrilled to see that.
Yeah, we were as well.
Good. So, the revale, I just have a couple of questions, and then I'll pass it over to Joe, but the revale services, so for FY23, obviously, it was much higher, because that was the big revale, and then it goes back to kind of the normal rate, right? For FY24, okay? And then we'll obviously be budgeting kind of that larger number, the over $100,000 in FY28-
Yes.
-for the next one?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Joe, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand the numbers. So, this year's bottom-line request is 384, 859-
Yes.
-and, which is down 12% from the prior year because you had the expenses for the revaluation. So, if I go back to the prior year, 2022, this is a 20% increase over 2022, what's the reason for the increase if we really should just be back to a steady state, a normal?
That was the contracts, the Vision contract and the RRC contracts increased. RRC increased a bit because the revale, or back in 2022, fiscal year 2022, I believe we looked at 50% of the personal property accounts, so, and then coming up in fiscal 24, they're going to be looking at a full 100%.
Okay, got it. Okay, no other questions, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, excellent. Any other questions? People in the room, or from the public? No? Okay, great, thank you so much, Erin.
Thank you.
All right.
One down, 40 to go.
Yeah, exactly, right, and just so everyone knows, we're just reviewing the budgets with the department heads, we're not voting on any of the budgets tonight. So, the next one, Treasurer Collector, Lori?
Good evening, I'm Lori Magner, for you who don't know me, and I'm presenting the budget for the Treasurer Collector's Office. So, the first slide is just a general outline of what we do in the departments, the department, it's kind of two-sided, but we do work together on a lot of things. So, the Treasurer is the manager of all the town's cash, we handle all the deposits, the dispersments through payroll, vendor warrants, wires, we handle the investment of all the town's funds, and we work on the debt issuance, and we work with the other departments, the financial director, the town accountant, on issuing debt, and we are the custodian of tax lien accounts, and we handle all the collection enforcement on that, and the land court foreclosures with our tax attorney. On the Collector's side, we issue and collect tax bills, real estate, personal property, we handle the betterments that come out of tax bills, sewer liens, we collect sewer use bills, motor vehicle, and BODEX size, and after those bills are mailed and sent out and they're not paid, we go on to enforce collection through demand bills, we send them to the deputy for collection, and then she proceeds to work with people for payment plans, and if all else fails, they become a tax lien. We also issue municipal lien certificates, which are done on all real estate transactions, and they are filed at the registrar D that places, like a lien of what's due on the property, so that's a very important part of that. So, the next slide just kind of is more detail about what we do, you know, the managing of the town's cash, we have, as of 1031, we had $148 million cash balance, we have over 60 bank accounts, we reconcile our revenue and expenses on each account, we reconcile with the GL, and we report our cash to the DOR yearly, and we are subject to the annual audit. The debt issuance is, we assist in issuing the long- and short-term debt, we make debt payments, and we maintain debt schedules. There's committees that are required by the Treasurer to be part of, the scholarship, taxation aid, and the Library Board of Trustees. And on the Collector's side, just a little more detail, so we issue real estate and personal property bills twice a year, but there's four quarters that we collect, and motor vehicle is issued once a year, but there could be several commitments over the year, depending on when you buy a car or sell a car, and boat bills go out once a year, and sewer bills go out twice a year, and so we issue and collect all that. We also provide customer service for all of these bills, and I think we strive to provide excellent customer service for the residents of Hingham. They call a lot, and we try to assist them quickly and efficiently, that's a really big goal of our department. So, currently, we are collected at 99.21% for fiscal 22 real estate, we also maintain the online payment services for the taxes and the sewer, it's two different modules, and they seem to be going quite well, we haven't made too many changes there, but we reconcile the tax in the sewer with the Treasurer in the count monthly, and then again, we maintain the tax liens and the municipal lien certificates, which brings in revenue for the town. So, the salaries this year is $372,050, it's a little bit lower than last year due to staff changes in the office, we have four full-time employees and two part-time, our expenses total $56,535, and I've listed the major things, is our postage, the printing of the tax bills, and the tax title budget to manage those tax accounts.
Excellent, thank you. I know you're not new to the department, but new to this leadership role, so thank you. Certainly a lot going on. Impressed to see the collection rate. How does that compare with other years, that 99.21?
We're usually that high.
That high, yeah. Excellent.
They're that good.
They're that good, I know.
Well, the town of Hingham is very, they're very good at paying their taxes.
Good, good. I noticed there's nothing under training, and I guess there hasn't been for a couple of years.
Under training on the...
On the budget itself.
Is there a training line?
There is a training line.
Why don't I see it?
I think so, unless I'm... There isn't?
Meetings and seminars?
Oh, no. Oh, no, sorry. Maybe that was the HR.
We do attend meetings and seminars on the, it's on the meeting and seminars line. And we do attend...
Oh, I see where she's...
...class.
That's the next one.
Yes, okay. Sorry, thank you. And the consulting services?
So that is Jean Montgomery, who has been allowed to help me transition.
Yes, perfect. Excellent. All right, do you have any questions, Joe?
I was going to ask what that consultant service is like because it didn't exist in prior years. And you've answered it. So it may go without saying, but I should say, you're the reason that the town is doing as well as it is. And everything that we're voting on is because you're doing your work. So thank you for that.
No pressure.
No pressure. I do have one or two questions. I note that you are, the department's very much involved with the sewer.
Sewer department in terms of doing their billing?
The collections, yes.
The collections?
So, Tom, is that part of the sewer department's budget, this activity? Or is it all held here?
I don't know if they do their own collections. I think we do them.
No, they, well, they pay for the bills to go out and all the expenses to that. But, so we don't really have any expenses for that except our staff.
Administering the process.
Right. It works well, though, to have them together because they do go hand in hand, you know, with the taxpayers. And it kind of makes sense to have it all together. If you're calling about your tax bill, you also want to, we can provide them with the sewer information also in one phone call instead of them having to make two phone calls. We need to have access to all of that information when we do the MLCs. So I think it's just, we, I'm not sure when we started doing it. I know it's while I was there, and it just seems to work seamlessly to have it all in one place.
Yeah, I think it works exceptionally well. But as we are looking, for example, comparing how sewer department is working versus maybe the water department, the water company, baked in their numbers, is a lot of activity that you are doing for sewer. So we're not actually, at least when I do that analysis, I thought it was apples to apples, and it really isn't. Knowing that the functions that you're doing, I didn't really...
We could try to estimate that value for you so that you can pull it out of one and add it to another.
Yeah. And I was also going to compliment you on the web services because I think it's a very important aspect. I know people will log on at the last minute, at the last hour, thinking, yeah, we've got to get it done. And, you know, what you've made available is very important to the town.
Yes, we do have live information on there, so every night it's updated, which makes it, you know, good to look.
But, no, this is great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to add something?
So I just wanted to jump in just real quick. I wanted to welcome Lori officially, right? So Jean Montgomery, longtime treasurer, retired a few months ago. Lori was the number two down there for many years. 18, 19 years. She moved into the top spot here a couple of months ago. She's hit it out of the park since she started, so happy to have her. Great job tonight, Lori. And now you've got another, what, many more years of doing this now?
It wasn't as bad as I thought.
That's right.
Well, most importantly, you're still smiling.
I keep checking that, Joe, and she is.
Excellent. Great, thank you, Lori.
Good job, Lori.
Thank you.
All right, next, Human Resources. Do we have Lisa?
We do.
Yep, she should be online.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lisa Campbell. I'm the Director of Human Resources Department.
You realize we can't see you because we just see a slide.
What's that?
We can't see you. We only see a slide at this point, but...
Oh. My video's on.
There we go, okay.
There we go. Now we can see you.
Ah, yay, thank you. The mission and services for the Human Resources Department is to manage the town's HR function for approximately 300 full-time and part-time non-school employees. The department assists the personnel board in the administration of the personnel bylaw, including position and classification and compensation, so the wage and classification study, the employee recruitment, selection, and orientation process, training, labor relations, collective bargaining, compensation and benefits, and civil service. We ensure the compliance of applicable labor laws and regulations, and we assist employees, retirees, and family members in enrolling in and understanding the town's health, dental, and life insurance benefits. Our benchmarks and metrics are managing six collective bargaining agreements, number of staff being hired and separated during the calendar year, and collecting benchmark data from our 19 comparable communities. We have several key initiatives, mostly to implement and manage and maintain the new GOVHR wage and classification system. While the process, it's a labor of love to implement that system, meaning that we are working on transitioning all of the job descriptions that are in town to represent the GOVHR language and format, mostly. We are managing yearly open enrollments for benefits. We maintain an I-9 record-keeping retention and destruction system. And we're expanding on the design and implementation of an enhanced quarterly training program for employees. The majority of our budget is requested for salaries with a small request for expenses. Salaries, we're requesting $174,475 for one full-time person and one part-time employee. Expenses were requested $3,925. Majority of that is for supplies and meetings and seminars. We are requesting an additional amount in, for the expansion of the training program that we're implementing. That amount is $4,800, which would allow us to provide more and different types of trainings.
Excellent.
That's my presentation.
Great, thank you, thank you so much, Lisa. Can you just expand a little bit about the training, what that would look like?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've partnered with a trainer who's provided some training recently, especially on harassment and, you know, workplace violence, those types of required trainings that we do. We've done some in-person, or we're planning some in-person trainings. We're looking to GOVHR to make recommendations for additional trainings that we might be interested in. Topics other than harassment would be like interviewing skills, management skills, sensitivity training, those types of things.
Excellent. Great, thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
Give me one second here. Yeah, I did, a couple of questions, sort of following up on the training. Is there a reason that the training item is listed as an additional request as opposed to going on the training line that, you know, under 11312, where there is training, it's just listed at zero? Is there a reason it's pulled out?
So, so we added the $4,800 to the meetings and seminars line, Lisa, as opposed to the trainings line?
Is that because it's in-person?
Yeah, we could put that right back, Michelle. Any thoughts on that?
I think that's just an old budget code that hasn't been removed because it, we don't budget in that line. I'm not sure there's really a difference. Meetings and seminars is what we mean for training, so it's really just a matter of using one or the other.
Okay.
Got it. So, so the, got it, so the... I'm noticing that the percent increases in the budget being presented are substantially less than the percentage increases that we've seen before. So prior years, it was, you know, 11% or more, and this year, you're about half that. So I'm impressed that the costs are being contained.
We're doing our best.
Yes, yes, and it shows, so thank you.
Excellent. Did you want to add anything, Tom?
Yes, and Lisa does a great job managing this department. And Joe, I agree with you. I love when we contain costs. But I'm hoping we do it in some of the bigger departments, in the $3,900, that's fine. But Lisa's doing her part for sure. Thank you, Lisa.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, great. Thanks so much, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right. Land Use and Development? Jennifer Orem? Come on up, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
Thank you so much for having me. All right. My slides? I have a cheat sheet because I'm going to try not to use the slide as much if that's okay. So my name is Jennifer Orem. I am the zoning administrator and senior planner for the Land Use and Development Department. This is my first time getting for you for this event. And we are new staff down there, myself and Emily, I mean Emily, I was always thinking of you. Eleanor are new, both within the same year. In that department, we focus mostly on the zoning board of the fields, but we also support the Affordable Housing Trust. And most recently, we have been working with the Board of Managers, who helps manage the lake and school apartments. The year has been a different year based on past five, if you look at everything we've been doing. We've sort of split things up differently with all the changes that have happened on the second floor and are working together as a team. We're very fortunate. I don't know anyone else who has come in and is lucky enough to have their predecessors across the hall. So I'm very, very lucky, and so is Eleanor. And we've really enjoyed hitting the ground running, being a part of this, seeing how Hingham does things, but also sort of really running into the affordable housing realm for both of us and working on the amount of single-family homes, et cetera, that we do. So our budget, as you'll see, is mostly salary with a smaller amount of operational costs, which would be for mailings, which we do for all of the applications with the zoning board of appeals, advertising. For, in both of these cases, we receive fees for those. And then for the Affordable Housing Trust, we, everything operationally comes out of there. So we manage their funds and keep a hand on their, as you know, their finances. But luckily, the funding and everything is all covered out of there. So I don't believe we're asking for any increases except for the contracted salary for this year. A couple of things I just wanted to mention that with zoning, we are seeing still continued less variances coming in, but we are seeing special permits and modifications. We also see a lot of traffic coming in for recommendations on projects down the road. And are lucky enough to work with a great building department, and we do work with them often on projects that are being applied for that might have a zoning component. So that's another way that we are able to look at what's being developed in town. And finally, with housing, we are making great strides on the portfolio we have. We have one that's been submitted to DHCD in the past year. We had one that the bids came in today for reconstruction. And another one that'll be, that's out to bed that we'll be hearing the bids for in a couple of weeks.
Great. Excellent. Well, thank you. My experience has been around Affordable Housing Trust, and you and Eleanor have done an amazing job supporting the trust, so thank you. And our goals for affordable housing, so thank you. I don't really have any questions about the actual budget. Do you have any questions, Joe?
No, I will say that she's responsible for supporting the most important group in town, which is the zoning board. So thank you for your work there. No, I think your budget is right on line. I just hear wonderful things about how you are managing there. And thank you for being there. I did have a question, though. How do you think Hingham does compare to our sister communities in terms of how this department is being run and how, you know, zoning?
That's a tough question, Joe.
Is this being recorded?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
I think it's apples and oranges. I think that, you know, I love how it's set up here with the different departments working independently, but also as a team. We just made that change in my previous community, and it was really working well. And it was just getting into the groove when I left. But I'm very happy that I've made the change. So I don't know if that answers the question.
That answers it, but if there are changes, modifications, improvements that you see, you will have an open door up here to make those suggestions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you all for your time.
Excellent, thank you.
I just want to add just real quick, so Jennifer's also brand new, right? So when we reshuffled downstairs, Emily went across the hall to planning, and Jennifer came in with Eleanor, like she said, in the first year. But I've talked regularly with her board, her board chair, Rob McGuire, who sings Jennifer's praises. Jennifer works hard. She's always here. She's doing her thing, and we're happy to have her. So thank you, Jennifer. Good job tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Eleanor. All right. Ready? Community Planning, Emily Wentworth?
Hi. So Emily Wentworth, Community Planning Director, as you alluded to, and Jen did as well. I am relatively recently across the hall in the Community Planning Department. This is actually my second year representing the budget for that team. So the key functions of the department fall broadly into two categories. The first is permitting, and that's permitting that's administered primarily by the planning board. The regulations that they are working with fall both under the Zoning Act and subdivision control, and to a lesser extent, actually, the Scenic Roads Act as well. And then our local regulations under the state legislation. The key highlights for the planning board, as I think you're all quite familiar with this year, was the prevalence of public permitting projects. So the board approved the South Fork Country Club reconstruction project, the public safety facility, as well as the foster school project, all within the span of, you know, a handful of months. Staff, which consists of both administrative staff and professional staff, primarily work behind the scenes to help the board from the pre-application stage. So that's helping the public as well navigate the board's processes. To the post-permits phase, which involves site inspections and then compliance monitoring to make sure that permities comply with all conditions of approval. In terms of this table, that's just a little snapshot of, you know, some of the fluctuations we see in permitting over a handful of years. 2020, the most frequent application the board receives are site plan review applications, but they've fluctuated a bit. I think the 2020 anomaly was COVID, so there was, you know, some, you know, negative impacts on the number of applications we saw in that year. Midway through that year, the town adopted lower site plan review thresholds. So by 2021, we started seeing many more site plan review applications. And then just this past year, the town actually adopted yet again revised site plan review triggers, so that we're now seeing slightly less than we were in 2021. So there's a greater focus now on those projects that involve more land disturbance, and it's less related to the uses that are administered by other agencies. The other key function of the department is, you know, more planning services. So as I just alluded to, there have been a few zoning amendments related to site plan review in recent years. Ones that you'll hear more about through the upcoming town meeting cycle involve an accessory dwelling unit recommended by law, and then some parking updates that are in part tied to some of the applications we've seen from HMLP. So again, other public projects. The completed ones are all within 2021, 2022. Some are recurring plans, so like the hazard mitigation plan, for instance, is, you know, we work on those every five years. Others that are very locally focused, such as the master plan, also is recurring but has a much longer cycle, so that's, you know, a 20-year type of window. And that's in part because of the comprehensive nature of that type of plan. Some of the other interesting projects we've worked on are regional plans. So one example is the South Shore Site Readiness Plan, and I just note that we worked with four other local communities that had shared goals, along with Mass Development, the Regional Planning Agency, MIPC, and the South Shore Chamber to try to better understand wastewater and water needs in various study areas. So our key initiatives moving forward are related heavily to those planning projects and implementation. So we're hoping to advance the goals, objectives, and recommendations of all of the prior plans. You know, the planning board just started talking about a more formalized master plan implementation process yesterday evening, so the board's committed to socializing that plan and tracking progress towards the recommendations within the plan. We also have talked quite a bit about the certain state zoning mandates that may affect related growth and policy recommendations from those plans. So specifically, that relates to the MBTA community's multifamily zoning requirements, and you'll be hearing more about that as we approach upcoming deadlines for compliance. In terms of staff support and then related there to our budget, obviously, the bulk of it is related to salaries. There are three full-time positions in the department, myself, senior planner Mike Silvera, and then unfortunately, our administrative assistant position is presently open, but we're actively looking for qualified replacements. Expenses, the biggest relate to consultant services or professional support to help us, you know, understand from an engineering perspective or a fiscal impact perspective what certain changes or development impacts we would see. And then there's also some statutory requirements related to advertising and legal notices or permit applications. And then I will note, we do have an additional request in for $3,500 for specifically consultant services, because that number's been pretty static in recent years, and we anticipate some more intensive projects in the upcoming year.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Emily, for all you've done. I know it's been a lot on your plate during this transition of the second floor, so thank you. And certainly, it's been a busy fall between the pool, foster, and public safety, so thank you for keeping that all going. So I was going to ask about the consulting, so thank you for clarifying that. It looks like it was fairly consistent. Well, it went up, well, it went down from 2021, then up from 2022, but versus last year, it's that additional request for $3,500. Is that right? Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
I used to work for Emily, so. I'm careful what I say. It's, I mean, the budget looks exactly as it should, so, and it reflects the work that you and the department have done, so thank you. I do have a couple of questions. To what extent has, have you or Jennifer been delegated authority to make certain more ministerial decisions that used to come to the boards? Has that been implemented?
So there is a certain provision under 40A, specifically section 13, that allows the zoning board of appeals to appoint a zoning administrator and then delegate certain of their responsibilities to that position. There is not a comparable regulation under the statute for the planning board to delegate. There is a provision in the local regulations, to the extent that site plan review is not under the zoning act, but is more of a local issue, that the board may adopt more internal or administrative regulations to delegate more minor site plan review applications to staff. It's a provision in the bylaw. It has not been implemented since it was inserted a number of years ago, but as we see more and more single-family home reconstruction projects and/or modified site plan approvals, it's certainly something I think the board may be interested in looking at again. So yes, on one side, no on the other.
But on the zoning board, has it been implemented?
Yeah, yeah. It was a number, it actually was put in place in the 80s after something was administratively, excuse me, constructively approved. So there was more professional assistance given to that board, and then eventually, they delegated responsibilities that changed over time. And when I was working across the hall, it hadn't been in place for a number of years, and then it was reinstituted.
On a different topic, you and I spent many, many months working on the South Hingham development projects, and then Rich Beal's untimely death, you know, really affected that. Is there any movement now?
It's a different quality of movement. I think that site readiness plan that I referenced, our study area was the South Shore Park, and A.W. Perry certainly is very actively involved with some of our partner organizations on that plan, for instance, the South Shore Chamber. There have been conversations, whether there's been direct movement at this point, it's, you know, it's not the same type of progress that we were making a number of years ago, in part because the market has changed significantly since prior to COVID.
Sure. But as you know, the town is looking for an increase in its economic base, and that is certainly an area that would be helpful for the town. I know that you have been working on that, and so to the extent that our board can support your activity, please let us know.
Yep, definitely a priority of the department as well.
Thank you. No other questions?
Excellent. Go ahead, Tom.
Just real quick, so just, she's being very humble as always. She, Emily and her department submitted with the planning board's work, I think, five or six?
Six.
Six new warrant articles by December 1st, so those came in timely, as always. Thank you for that work. And, well, Emily knows what I think of the work she does. She's the quarterback of the second floor. She's working closely with Art Now on all things economic development. I will say, Joe, to your question about A.W. Perry and others, there is an open line of communication with them. Like Emily said, it's perhaps not as active as it was at one point. That could be for a number of reasons, including the economy, so, but we are, we do have an open line of communication with them and certainly monitoring whatever we can do to help get that rolling.
Actually, I do have a question on the budget, and it's both on the zoning and planning budgets. To the extent that there are things like advertising services, do applicants pay those pay fees?
They pay application fees that in both cases are deposited into the general fund, but then the department budget is paying the newspaper and/or the, you know, the mail.
So the money that comes in for those application fees is not reflected in these budgets? Is that correct?
Not directly.
So in the budgets that we're looking at, I don't see it.
Okay.
So I'm not saying, I'm not saying it needs to be, I just want to understand that.
Yeah. My, and we can assess this, but the application fees that we do collect, and again, go to the general fund, they exceed what we would for a typical application incur in terms of expenses for postage and legal ads.
So for example, for the building department, do we, I think we do see the fees that come in, because I know.
It's a revolving fund. I think it's a.
Sue Nicholson is right there. She'll gladly answer all these questions.
All goes to the general fund.
General fund.
Okay. Great. Okay. No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Great job.
All right. Carol Falvey, town clerk. We need to pick up the pace here.
Yeah, I know. I'm going to stop it.
No more questions. No kidding.
Great. That's perfect.
We'll start after you.
And no one's from the public, right? That is trying to ask questions?
I'm in two places at one time right now, because I was watching you all downstairs in my office on Zoom, and I didn't shut it off before I came up here. So, thank you for having me. Nice to be here. Last year, I think we did this all via Zoom, so it was my first live presentation. So our mission and services, you know, we'll talk about elections, because that's the most recent one for us. There's a lot that is involved with that. We had 64% of Hingham voted in the November 8th election, and so we beat the state average by a bit, and we had about 60% of people voting day of voting, and about 40% did early, took advantage of that. And we did much better on this election than on the primary. We only had under 1,000 that had requested early ballots that actually did not return them, so we're making progress.
Good.
So among our other services, you know, posting meetings and keeping up with open meeting guidelines, that's a, we're a very active town in terms of committee meetings and what we do. Processing vital records, death certificates, marriage certificates, birth certificates, certifications for town meeting. We, in January, will do the annual street listing census that will be going out to people, public record requests, which are continuing and ongoing and hard to manage when you're in the middle of a big election, but we do the best we can. And of course, you know, overseeing business certificates, dog licenses, off-leash permitting, it's a very busy office.
Yes.
For sure. And then this just, the next slide will show you what our statistics are, sort of year to year, in terms of our focusing a little bit on registered voters and our voter turnout. So we have, we do really well in terms of participating in elections. I think Hingham should be proud, proud of that, of that fact. And in terms of our key initiatives, in this next fiscal year, we will be managing both the presidential primary in March, as well as the April town election, and then, of course, kicking off with the New Votes Act. We will be hitting July, even though it will be a new fiscal year, but we will be starting right away with our early voting process. So it'll be a very, very busy spring for us. Managing the volume that is now spread out with the whole early voting act is definitely a challenge for the size of our office. There is no doubt about that. And then keeping up with all of the other responsibilities and functions and the expectation of doing those in a timely, in a timely manner. Once again, we will be training and managing new office staff this year. We have a new senior town clerk joining us in the week before Christmas, and Jennifer has stepped up as the assistant town clerk, so she's transitioning very well into that role. And once again, as last year, expanding communication channels both within the town and also, I would like to see what we can do to gather local town clerks together on some, you know, quarterly, nobody has done that that I'm aware of on this South Shore, and I'd like to see if we can focus a little bit on that, because I think we could provide a lot of feedback to our state senator and state reps about how certain things that are being initiated up here happen down here.
Right. Great.
Anyway, so now we're on to, you know, our budget's not significant. We have salaries for three people and modest expenses, mainly due to printing and postage, and the printing is for the annual census and the street listing. And then if we turn to elections, again, so the salaries here, there are some stipends, and basically, these are people that are brought in at election time to help support and process early applications, work the day of voting, and our expenses are for, generally are for computer services agreements with LHS and for postage, and then again, some minor printing expenses. I do have an additional request for this budget, which would be a part-time person to join our office. I feel that with the growing responsibilities of our office for the early voting, it does require additional support. What we found going through this past few months is that we prioritized what we were doing, but many things sort of took a backseat, and we spent from July, basically through Thanksgiving, mainly focused on election. And if we had somebody else in the office who was trained on other systems in the office that could help maintain that so that there wasn't this gap, dog licenses, business certificates, we couldn't even send out renewals because we just didn't have the bandwidth to do it all. And also, just the answering, answering the phone, and it was significant. It was, it was a learning experience for all of us, for sure, going through the past three months. So that is the basis of my request, and I'm, if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your leadership and all of your work. The elections have gone smoothly, which is amazing. So the additional request, that's the 24,000?
Correct.
Okay.
For a 20-hour-a-week part-time person.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Do you have any questions, Joe?
Your office is doing a great job, so thank you. So as I look at it, if we add in the additional request, your salary line will be increasing from last year by about 18 and 1/2%.
That's probably true.
And that's a big jump.
I understand that.
Part of that is from the, is a result of, well, most of it, probably all of it, is a result of relatively new employees coming in and getting the step increases in addition to the cost of living increases. That's contractually obligated through the bylaw.
Right. Right. But the additional increase in itself is 12% of the total budget, total salary here.
Yep.
I can just report that from what I hear from residents, they're all so impressed with how the office is running, so thank you.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Just to recap, so Carol's been doing this now for a couple of years.
Year and a half.
Year and a half. Or 17 years.
I'm right there with you, Carol.
Exactly right.
We both started at the same time.
That's right. You know, and she's doing it with the new staff. She's doing it with new rules and regulations from the state and the feds in a different world than any of us remembered five short years ago. She does it with grace, and she's a pleasure to work with. Everybody in this town hall loves Carol. She's become, she's become part of the team in a very short period of time, so love having you here, Carol. You're doing a great job, so thank you.
Excellent. All right, do you want to go into elections?
We did, we talked about it. Yeah, we did it as a combination.
As a, okay, perfect. All right, any questions on either of those?
Not at all.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You, too. All right, Sue's up for the next couple.
And I do actually have a little thing on the building permits.
Okay.
Gas, plumbing, and electric does do go into a revolving fund.
Okay.
But the building permits go into the general fund.
Okay.
Hi, Sue Nicholson, town accountant. I'm here for quite a few of the budgets. First, are the town accountants, the mission services. We manage the weekly. We manage the weekly payroll and accounts payable warrants for the town school and for the South Shore Regional Emergency Communication Center, lovely node as Shrek. We also have a retirement office in our, in my department. And just a little fun fact, there's 351 municipalities in Massachusetts and there are only 104 retirement boards. So a lot of regionals, but Hingham has its own. And out of our 20 comparable towns, 13 have their own retirement boards. We also coordinate the yearly audit for the town. We prepare and submit the yearly annual comprehensive financial report known as the ACFA. We assist in the preparation of the town's yearly budget. We submit all requirement, required forms to government agencies and we manage the workers' comp and unemployment. Some of the matrix, benchmarks and metrics for the department. We report to the IRS, the Mass Department of Revenue, unemployment, PARAC for retirement, and the ACFA for the GFOA. And the one thing I am very proud to say, we did receive our FY '21 award for the financial reporting. And it's the 26th consecutive year Hingham has received the award. Zero municipalities have any more than we do.
Perfect.
Sue's office is also the king of acronyms.
The key initiatives in the department is implementing the municipal upgrades and improvements. We are still continuing to try to get our stubborn employees to go direct deposit. And we're trying to also, we've been implementing emailing direct deposits instead of mailing them to save on paper and postage. Training new staff, long-term capital planning, and providing staff support for the advisory committee and the audit committee. My budget, the salary is five time, five full-time employees, but 329,823. It consists of one town accountant, one assistant town accountant, payroll administrator, accounts payable specialist, and a retirement administrative assistant. But that is funded by the retirement fund. The expenses, 10,150, which is a decrease from this year. And the major, major items is $3,000 for conferences, but we also have a line item for audit services of $76,500. The last slide, other budgets managed by my department is the contributory retirement, debt service, general insurance, which is property building and liability, group insurance, which is health and basic life insurance, Medicare, the OPEB, other post-employment benefits, the reserve fund, which is a budget for untorsen expenses that arise during the fiscal year, workers' compensation, and unemployment.
Excellent. All right, well, congratulations. I think that's pretty impressive about the award. And thank you for all that you do. One question about the audit. So that's the, the annual audit that happens, right?
Outside audit, yes.
The outside audit. Just curious why that went down a little.
Well, for FY '23, the board and advisory just approved a reserve fund transfer of $12,000 because our single audit is...
Oh, right, yes.
It turned out that they have to, they had to do three audits instead of one single one for any federal grant money. So it was an extra $12,000.
Right, okay. But we're not expecting that for next year.
If we do, then we'll just go for another reserve fund transfer.
Okay. Okay, great. Joe, do you have any questions?
Nope, no other questions. I was, I had the same question about the audit.
All right, do you have any questions? I don't know how you want to go with all the other.
Do you want to go through each of?
Yeah, we can just...
Employee benefits?
Yeah, yeah, we should do that.
Okay. Want to start with the reserve fund?
Yes.
Okay, the reserve fund is money set aside for unexpected occurrences during the fiscal year. And our town's financial policy recommends approximately 0.75% of the operating budget. So for FY '24, I am asking for $734,184, which is an increase from FY '23 because our FY '23 budget went up, so.
Okay. So that's just based on that formula?
Yes.
Okay.
No questions.
Okay.
Group insurance for right now, this is a placeholder, and it is 10% increase over FY '23's revised budget of $778,168. We will not get GIC rates until the first week of March.
Okay. And we have no indication of if that's...
Not yet, not yet.
Okay. Okay.
Other post-employee benefits are OPEB. This is straight off our valuation schedule. And we just finished our evaluation as of 6:30, 2022. State law requires us to be fully funded by MT40. So FY '24's department request is $1,003,137,300, up slightly from FY '23.
Any questions?
No, did you, did you discuss the group insurance and that increase?
Yes, it's 10% over FY '23's budget. It's a, basically, it's a placeholder for right now because we will not get the rates until March.
Got it. No, no other questions then, thanks.
The contributory retirement, this is straight off our valuation schedule, which we just had our valuation as of January 1st, 2022, for $6,303,180. It is a bit of an increase from FY '23. If you remember, last year, we voted to increase the COLA base from $13,000 to $14,000. So that is the increase.
Okay.
Workers' compensation, I'm level funding it at $333,000. Workers' comp, we are self-funded. And this money goes into a trust fund and we pay all, any workers' comp claims out of this fund. As you can see, FY '22 was a big hit.
Yes.
We had several major, major claims, which will continue in '23.
Okay.
Unemployment, I am level funding it at $30,000. This is another budget that is self-funded. We pay as you go. We did have a slight increase in '22 and that was due to COVID.
Okay.
Employees' Medicare, this is another budget that right now, I am just increasing it by 10% of FY '23's budget at $1,168,195. This is a direct correlation to salaries, it's 1.45% of all salaries. And general insurance, this is property and liability insurance. And right now, this is another placeholder, 10% over FY '23's budget at $1,225,910.
So is this, is this the premium?
Yes.
And, and we do not self-insure this, this is?
This is, this is a premium.
Right. And is this, it covers liability for the town as well as, like, personal injury, all sorts of liability?
Yes. Property, vehicles, employees, everything.
Is this town-wide or to include the schools?
Yes.
It does, so it's the entire, okay. Great, thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Sue?
Well, I note that Ray Ester is in the audience and he's hoping I'm going to ask all the tough questions now. It's his turn, I'll be exhausted. No, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Sue.
Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you, Sue.
All right. Tom, you're up.
Okay. So we'll start with the Select Board Office budget. So I love this slide. This really kind of underscores a lot of our day-to-day operations, right? We have, and I love the second bullet, it's 250 employees across six public employee unions. And again, this is non-school, right? 250 employees across six public employee unions, 23 departments and eight buildings. So a lot going on at any given time. We manage, we manage that out of here on the third floor. 400 volunteers across some 70 boards and committees. Also managed out of our office, Sharon Profetti in our office, our office manager is in large part the person responsible for managing that effort. That's a heavy lift and awesome people to work with, but a lot to manage. You know, some 50, we do roughly, right, a select board meeting a week on average during the course of the year. So 50-plus a week there. You know, we have a communications consultant now helping us make sure that we're communicating successfully with the public. We have responsibility for the annual budget, for town meeting, for the annual report. All of those are things that have to happen every year for the town to function. We also handle all the public records requests, procurement, et cetera. We coordinate legal activities and we also liaise with any federal, state, and regional, if local or different officials. So. The next slide. So, you know, one of the big benchmarks that we, that we use to get, to gauge our success in any given year is the AAA bond rating. We actually are the recipient of the rare triple-triple, of which there are a few across the state. We have all three major credit rating agencies rate us when we do a large borrowing and we've always received a AAA rating over the last many, many years. There are Moody's alone, you can see this slide, there's about 14 or so AAA communities rated by Moody's each year. Gives you a sense of the rarified air that Hingham operates in. Lot going into those, those ratings, but I like to think that, that we, we're a pretty well-run community and that's what keeps us there. So a lot of key initiatives here. Some of these are new, some of them are kind of ongoing. We have a new ADA compliance program being run by ART. That's a, that's a great initiative that ART is working with the, the Council on Disabilities with. You know, ART is also leading our, our efforts in terms of economic development, working closely with Emily Wentworth down on the second floor. You know, in addition to all the other stuff that we do with Michelle running the budgets and all that. So there's a lot going on up here. One of the things I wanted to point out a little bit more recent, in recent years, we've supported the Health Department through COVID-19 challenges. A bit more recently, we've shifted to some mental health challenges and supporting the community in those, in those ways. So I like to think we can be nimble enough to move. We certainly have, the willing department heads and staff are everywhere. Everybody just wants to help. So whenever we have to shift like that, Susan Sarny downstairs has just been great to work with, so. Anyway. So this department runs on salaries of $712,000 a year with expenses at $116,000. There are six full-time and three part-time employees out of this department. The full-time employees are myself, then we have ART and Michelle in addition to Kathy Riley, who runs our procurement program. And then, of course, Sharon and Heidi in our office. And then, of course, the three select board members and the best deal in town, by the way. And then our expenses, our expense budget is what it is. The big part of that right now is the decision we made a few years ago to move to a consulting firm to help us again with that, with that communication piece. That's $35,000 a year. So we do have an additional request this year. And this is the, probably comes as no surprise, the Sustainability Coordinator have good news and bad news on this front. The bad news I'll start with first is that we still haven't hired this person. But that's in large part because through two postings, we got very few to zero applicants. However, through ART's efforts, we were able to find a very highly qualified person that we're expecting to start here in the next couple of days. So that's exciting. The good news is that the state is funding the first year's effort of that person's work, shared effort between Hingham and Cohasset. That the state is further allowing us to start that year, that year's funding, beginning with the start date of the employee, which means we'll be able to go halfway through FY '24 in terms of funding. So when we get around to funding this position permanently, if we do as an additional request, it would only be for a prorated amount for FY '24. So good news and bad news on that front. But we're excited to get that work started. And I know the, some of the committees in town are anxious to get rolling with that as well.
So the $39,000 is the prorated amount?
It's the prorated amount for FY '24, that's right.
And it's Hingham's share?
No, that, that, this is contemplating a full-time employee for Hingham as a sustainability coordinator, no longer shared. So if we wanted to go that route, that's what I'm, I'm anticipating. Unfortunately, I have, we got to the point in the budget cycle where I haven't had this person working yet. So I don't know actually if we're going to need it, but I'm anticipating, I'm hoping to get a little bit more information over the course of the next month before anybody has to vote on any of these priorities or these, prioritizing these additional requests. But I'm anticipating the town needing a full-time sustainability coordinator of our own. And that the one, the one-year, one-year trial period of working together with Cohasset would, would go away. But again, I don't know that for sure yet because I haven't had the person working. But for right now, that's, that's the plan. Questions on the?
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. I think, you know, we want to set some metrics to understand if we need more capacity in that role.
Absolutely.
It's easy to imagine that we would, given where we are with the Climate Action Plan, et cetera. But I think we should have some, some benchmarks or metrics to, to just have that measured against. And then the consulting services, so it's down from FY '23. The $35,000 is just for the communications consultant?
That's right.
Is that right?
Yep.
And do you feel like that's enough capacity for communications?
Apparently, Michelle would like to say something.
Oh, sorry, Michelle.
Go ahead, Michelle.
No.
Oh. Oh, she's unmuted by X-Men.
She thought she was muted, yes.
I'm sorry, Liz, what was your question?
So for the communications, I guess I'm just worried that we, we might need more there.
Yeah.
More of a communications department.
What was the reason again, Michelle, for the 83 in FY '23?
So what you're seeing, I'm sorry, before I clear my throat, but not mean to do it like that. So what you're seeing there is the expenses being subtracted from FY '23 because our, our current sustainability coordinator was a contractor or is going to be a contractor. So the additional request is moving that money from consulting and expenses to salaries to be able to bring a permanent personnel staff.
Okay.
So it's coming down from 83 last year to 35, or this year to 35 next year?
Right, so the 35 is the constant for the communications consultant that Tom mentioned. Last year, we added the sustainability money on top of that in expenses into consultant and now we're kind of shifting that
To salary.
To salaries to have a permanent employee instead of a contractor providing more of a short-term solution.
Right.
And the good news, and I, and I was remiss in mentioning this, but our legislatively, or excuse me, our legislative team up in Boston, Joe Moschino and Pat O'Connor, were successful in getting us a state earmark to fund the full cost of that position during this year. So we didn't have to expend any of that money. So that'll all get turned back to, to the fund, to fund balance.
Okay. I guess my, my only concern is that we need more budget towards communications.
Right now, we're not projecting that need.
Okay.
You know, where, you know, yes, there are, there are ways that we can improve our use of JGPR, frankly. We are working with that. ART had a meeting with them, I think today, was it today or yesterday?
It was late last week.
Okay, late last week, on that, on that matter. And just to make sure that we're maximizing the use of...
Right, because I know with certain communications per month, right? Are we, are we utilizing all that?
We are, but I'm not sure we're maximizing the efficiency of the effectiveness of those, of those communications.
Okay.
And that's where I think we need to get a little bit better.
Okay, all right, excellent.
But all covered within the contract, so that number shouldn't need to change.
Okay. Okay. All right. Very good. Well, thank you.
I may have another question.
Sure, go ahead.
So, Tom, does Hingham Light have a Sustainability Coordinator?
They do.
So, bringing on this person, would, there would then be two Sustainability Coordinators for Hingham?
There would, yep, there would be one working generally for the town and one through HMLP's rate structure.
Right, and HMLP works for the town as well, so.
They're a sister agency, yeah.
So, what, what is the coordination there, and how do we do this so that the residents are getting the full benefit of this?
Absolutely. So, my intent is that this person, when they start, will be coordinating with, with them to the extent appropriate. I don't know if you have any added thoughts you want to?
Well, I think fundamentally, we just, we'll ensure that there's no overlap. Being clear about what HMLP is focusing on will free us, free our Sustainability Coordinator to look past electric power. As you know, sustainability issues extend far beyond just electric power alone.
Sure.
No other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Want the next one?
Legal?
Uh, legal.
Is it next?
Yes. Okay, so our legal budget is, and it's divided up into four categories each year. We have our Town Counsel, that's John Coughlin. Our Real Estate Counsel is Susan Murphy. Labor Counsel is Kevin Feeley, and our Litigation Counsel is Kerry Ryan. You see those four, the division of those four sectors in the pie chart there, our total, FY '22 Legal Services totaled $622,000, and our FY '24 request is significantly less, just because it's a very difficult budget to, to project. But this number at $395,000 is up from the number that we had used to, we used to always budget, which shows, I think, somewhere in the ballpark of $230,000. So, this was a correction, a, something that I would refer to, I think, as a structural deficit that had always been in our budget, and it's a correction made a couple of years ago to fund roughly 80% of the, I believe, five-year average at the time. This 395, 372 request for FY '24 is intended to be of 80% of the 10-year average, so that we could, you know, again, the, the intent is to fund it in, in, in a better way, but, and I believe what the Board asked me to do a couple of years ago when we started this effort, was to, for me to try to rein in the expenses within legal to the extent possible as well. So, we do the best we can. This is going to be short, it's not going to be enough. I don't know how much it should be, but it's, it's a better estimate than certainly we used to do, so. And it's perhaps a poor, a poor explanation, but it's the best I got.
Understand, it's, it's hard to estimate.
It really is, yeah.
I mean, obviously, looking at our 10-year average is helpful. I don't, do we look at other communities, the benchmark communities or other communities of our size and what they're budgeting?
I don't.
See if that influences another?
Michelle, did we, did you do that for the, in the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force work?
No, not for this department.
Okay. Certainly could.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we did look at that. Did you have a question, Joe?
Yeah, a couple, one question, I'm looking at the first sheet, which shows fiscal year '22 is the 573, 816, and on the next page, it shows the actual fiscal year '22 is 622, 135. Do we know which is the correct number?
The Munna sheets don't reflect any encumbrances at the end of the year, so sometimes the under sheet, well, we've spent, so when Sue helped us put these numbers together for the, for the lookback, she's included the encumbrances there.
So, the 622, 135 includes it, and, and so that is the correct number?
Yes.
Okay. And Tom, I know you, you talked about that, a better way to fund it and a better way to manage. What, is there anything that this Board can do to help on the management side? Because that's, that's what it comes down to, is really managing the legal, the use of legal personnel.
No, you're absolutely right. Well, the easy answer is, let's not enter into big, complex issues anymore. The less of those we enter into, the less we'll need legal support.
Doing that all the time.
The difficulty is, and, and we're just lucky here in Hingham, that we have a lot of legal support all around us. The problem with that is, the, you want formal, official legal support that is not affiliated to the community. In other words, Joe, I lean on you on a regular basis, I lean on Bill, right? But you guys aren't the town's lawyer, you're happy to be lawyers on the Board. So, there's certainly advice I can get from you, but it's different than paid advice from a professional that's in this field and giving their opinion in a, in a formal way. So, you know, I, I do think that next year's legal expenses will be down from this year's. We've had a number of complex issues between the, the two buildings that we, that we just went through with the, to build, two building projects and the special town meeting. I think we're gonna need a lot of help with, with some of the override discussions, but again, that will be in FY '23. I'm expecting FY '24 to be a little bit of a breather year, and I would think that we'll need less legal support during that course of that year.
Have we looked at having an in-house counsel?
Not to my knowledge, not since I've been here. I got here in '16, and that's not been requested, but certainly able to look at it.
I mean, just as, as the legal budget grows.
Yeah, right.
Which is why many companies on the private side ultimately bring in, bring it in. I don't know if it's been looked at before, or?
I can also ask around towns our size, and, and like Liz was saying, what are the comparable budgets, and do any of them have in-house counsel?
Yeah.
And I understand it's not just cost, it's quality of advice.
Right.
And the quality of advice that we've been getting has just been superb.
It has been great. I do like the idea, kind of similar to what we're doing with the communications work, right, of a very different degrees, but I like the idea of having special, specialties available to us, rather than one person that kind of is expected to know everything.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Okay, good, thank you.
What do we got next?
Town meeting?
Town meeting, so, so town meeting, we are budgeting this year for one town meeting.
That would be good.
That would be nice, right? Back to our norm, haven't done the norm in a few years, but back, one town meeting held indoors, so that affects how we budget, obviously. You know, we, there's a lot that goes into that, some salaries for support staff, et cetera. We print over 10,000 warrants, a lot of postage goes in, goes along with that, we have to rent all those chairs, and the audiovisual components. We're trying to bolster our, our, our compliance with ADA.
Accessibility.
Accessibility concerns, and, and Art, again, spearheaded that effort, and, you know, we're gonna continue to try to do that, there'll be expenses that go along with it, additional visual, visual and audio concerns there, you know, stenographer services and the like, so. That's it for town meeting.
No questions?
Okay.
What's next, Michelle?
Health Imperatives?
Mine just got a little bit out of order. So, Health Imperatives is a, this is a nonprofit, community-based agency that helps us provide health and human services to our residents in town. Last year, they helped 14 Hingham residents, and that cost of $2,700 to the town. That budget number has not changed in many years. They've not requested an increase to it. This was the, the annual request, and that's the letter we received this year.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And the South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center, similar, similar type of service. This is a domestic violence prevention and intervention agency, and again, they help, they help our residents in need, and this budget line has not changed in many years. Again, $3,700 is the formal request we received from the agency.
Is, is that sufficient to meet the need?
You know, it's a good question, Joe. I ask myself, sometimes we have to call these guys and ask them to submit their request to us, remind them, just because they're, they're just busy, they're understaffed, they're, you know, perhaps don't have the bandwidth internally to monitor those things. I have asked them in years past, is that number sufficient? And I get that, that would be great if you could do that for us, and that kind of an answer. It's, you know, not necessarily responsive, but that's what we get. I don't want to beg someone to ask me for more money, but on the other hand, they seem appreciative for that amount.
Do you?
I think it's important, our residents, obviously, I know you're not suggesting otherwise, but our residents use this service, and it's an important one.
Do we know if Aileen is interacting with them at all?
You know, I haven't asked her that question.
Good question.
Art, do you know offhand, or Michelle?
We haven't, I haven't heard that name come up specifically, but we can check in with her on that.
Yeah, she, I mean, she may have a good sense of if, if we're meeting the need with this budget amount or not.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Ready to move on? All right.
All right. See, we spread that out, Liz.
I know. Okay. Next agenda item, submit and discuss select board-sponsored warrant article for 2023 Annual Town Meeting, Article A, the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund.
This is the most important article in the Annual Town Meeting. As everyone knows, generally, Article One, we're referring to it here as Article A, as the warrant has not been finalized and subsequently numbered. Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund is a fund established back in 1915 that is intended to, to help folks in need in South Hingham. It's an annual effort, I, I like to think of this as part of the cultural, the culture of the community. I love this being our first annual article, so nothing's changed. We regularly get these volunteers that are willing to come out and help us with this effort, and they've agreed again, so.
Great. Yes, no questions? So, it's, yes, it's a person being re-elected?
Yeah.
Yes. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to submit the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund article as Article A for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, and to recommend favorable action on said article.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Liz? Aye. Motion carries? Great, all right. The next item on the agenda is discussion and potential vote regarding approval of the Massachusetts School Building Authority Project Scope and Budget Agreement for the William L. Foster Elementary School Project and all associated documents. We have Ray, thank you for your patience.
Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street for the School Building Committee, and with me is Chris Carroll of PMA, our owner's project manager.
And also 18 Bremer Circle.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, do you want to describe what we're looking at here?
Yeah, so, we are here this evening to ask for approval and execution of the official project scope and budget agreement with the Mass School Building Authority for the Foster Replacement Elementary School Project. This is a, kind of a form agreement, which is required for every core building program, project with the MSBA. We've gone through this before with the East Project, with the Middle School Project as well, and it's a pretty straightforward agreement, which, you know, essentially memorializes a number of details with respect to size, scope, and the approved budget for the project that was voted on by the MSBA Board on August 31st of this year. It, it includes a number of exhibits which detail the maximum grant from the MSBA that can be expected, the reimbursement rate and the process for reimbursement, the project schedule, various rights and obligations of, of the town, and execution of the project, and requirements and responsibility of, of those items that lie with largely the OPM and, to some extent, the School Department Administration.
Great. Excellent. Do you want to add anything, Chris?
Before you tonight, you just have the one document, the Project Scope and Budget Agreement, that requires approval. The other attachments have all been previously signed and are with the School Department.
Okay, great. So, are they submitted again, though, with this?
Yeah, they get attached as exhibits, they're incorporated by reference as exhibits, they get attached at the end, but they've been previously, at different stages of the process up until this point, they've already been approved and signed.
Right.
By the parties necessary.
Okay. And I understand this is just a very typical next step in the project.
That's exactly right. As a requirement in order to kind of officially button up the MSBA approval, the funding process, and then the ability for us to really actually start to get reimbursement for work that's being done already.
Yes. Okay. And this needs to be returned by, is it December 31st?
I believe that's the date that they required it, in that letter they sent.
We're looking to return it as soon as practical.
Yes, okay.
We'll hand-deliver it to the MSBA once it's completed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. And if there are any changes to the plan or the schedule or the budget, what happens then?
We're, through the OPM, we're, and school administration, we're kind of in regular communication with the MSBA. We're not expecting any changes in any of those things, but to the extent that there are any, we're, we're in that direct communication with the MSBA, and there's really kind of an open dialogue back and forth. We did get some good news budget-wise. We went out to bid on the Phase One early site package, and that was more than $2 million under the estimate in the budget.
Great, that is great news.
So, not that that means that's found money, but that's potential savings going forward when we're looking at the next bidding process. So, it's, it's definitely a positive and good news.
Excellent. Thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
Yeah, well, first, you know, thank you for your work, I mean, this is amazing, and it keeps going on. I mean, you, you reach one hurdle, and then there's the next, then there's something else. So, thank you. Looking at the agreement, there are a couple provisions I want to make sure that we're good on. The first one, I'm in 42A, which has no later than 120 days after August 31st, which puts us in December. The town needs to have accomplished certain things, and we need to notify the, the MSBA that we've done that. So.
Right.
Have we accomplished it, and have we notified the MSBA that we've, we've done this?
We have. Those are essentially the, the formal resolutions and, and votes that were secured at town meeting and then at the ballot on November 8th. So, certified, they had to, we had to get the town clerk to certify after the numbers were final, and those have all been taken care of already.
And then, the section right below there is a requirement on the OPM, no later than the 12th day of every calendar month, we, that's progress report prepared by the OPM summarizing all project, proposed project activity during the, so are we doing that, and what, what checks are in place to make sure that that actually happens?
We have a online reporting system through the MSBA that we're required to go in and submit by the 12th each month.
Okay.
It's part of our standard required data entry every month, so it, it has to happen or they start chasing you. But it also, we never want it to be missed, because it, they'll start to say, we're gonna delay payments and reimbursements and all that.
Exactly.
So, we're fully aware of that, and we do everything we can to make sure we're on schedule by the 12th.
So, when you do those submissions, is Ray copied, or is someone else from the town copied, so we know that it's, that it's happened?
It's normally generic input of progress updates and costs and data, and we'll copy the committee on the input promptly.
Great. And then, I'm looking at Section 7.7, which is the notice requirement, which is usually very generic. In this case, a couple things. First, I, I noticed that the MSBA, they can, they can be reached by mail or by fax. The town, there's no fax number, so it's only, we're gonna be relying on stand-mail. Is there a reason we did not include a fax number to get re, so that they can reach us in a more expedited basis?
I don't know that there is a reason we didn't, we can certainly ask them to include that.
Yes. And, in addition, given.
I would, I would say, Joe, that for the most part, the communication is by email.
That's what I've, that, that's.
As a practical matter, but yes, I think we can certainly.
I would, I would assume. So, this is sort of like the legal sufficiency.
Sure.
And I'd also, to the extent that we can get the MSBA, MSBA to do this, I would want to have communications that are going to the town, not only going to the Super have communications that are going to the town, not only going to the superintendent, but also going to the town administrator's office. Because the implications from a financial standpoint are not limited to the school. It's the entire town.
Sure. We can make that request.
Yes. And other than that, I mean, obviously, I've reviewed this, and I think this is good form in that we should proceed.
Excellent. Any other questions? Does anyone have questions on this? No? All right.
Liz, if I could just say one last thing. You've all been very gracious with your thanks and your support throughout this whole process. And I know there's a number of us who've been working on it for a number of years, and it's very exciting to be at the point where we're at. But I wanted to thank all of you publicly, the work that you did to get us to town meeting to prepare for it and get us through town meeting and successful votes thereafter was Herculean. And Tom, Art, Michelle, your staffs, and the three of you, Bill as well, it's just been tremendous, and we're very grateful.
Well, thank you for saying that, Ray. It's certainly a team effort, and we say Hingham together, right? So it's certainly a town-wide effort, and we're committed to this school being built. So as exciting as town meeting was and election day, I know now the real work begins, so thank you. Do you want to add anything, Joe?
No, but I am prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to authorize the Chair of the Select Board to sign the Massachusetts School Building Authority project scope and budget agreement and all associated documents for the William L. Foster Elementary School Project.
Second, by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you both for being here.
Thanks, Ray. Thanks, Liz.
Okay. Next agenda item is appointments. I don't think we have any tonight. Do you have any, Joe?
I don't.
Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment.
Excuse me, Ray, are you heading off?
I am.
If you can, we're going to be finished very soon. I just want to have a quick...
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
I don't know that we have anyone from the public, but should I read the statement?
I would just ask for public comment.
Okay. Does anyone have public comment? Okay, seeing none. All right. The next item on the agenda are town administrator and select board reports. Who wants to start? Art?
Sure. I can just follow up a little bit on some of the conversation that we've heard earlier this evening. First, as I think you're aware, Susan Sarni, our health executive officer, has been working with other town departments to organize a team of social work-oriented staff to help look at a number of challenges that the community is facing, most recently, as you know, mental health-related. But substance abuse is another related concern, and others, as different departments connect with different segments or populations in the community, you know, run into intersecting opportunities. They put together a team that's, that we will expect to, going forward, you know, develop interdepartmental approaches. You'll hear a little bit more about that when Susan presents her budget. What I do want to share is that as a first step, that team is launching a monthly, I don't want to, not sure I want to call it a newsletter, but a monthly resource that will make available to the community oriented on health and wellness. It will be available on our website tomorrow and will be pushed to our, through our channels, to different members and residents in the community. Also, just to build a little bit on what Tom mentioned regarding ADA Title II compliance, I'm pleased to report that we have just about, all but one of the draft reports for the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan in hand. We're looking to make those draft documents available to the public, working with the Commission on Disability, working towards, first, a public hearing, and finally, pending your approval, making them the foundation document for our community to improve our compliance town-wide. And you'll certainly be learning more about that fairly soon.
Excellent.
I think I'll just leave it there for this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Michelle?
Nothing for me this evening. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Tom?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Art. I know Sue Sarni has been working incredibly hard, and with your help. I'm excited to see the Wellness Wednesday launch tomorrow, so thank you to everybody that has worked on that. And also excited to see the self-evaluation. I know the Commission on Disabilities is anxious to get that going, so thank you. I did just want to say thank you to everyone that helped with Christmas in the Square, which was held last weekend. It's a wonderful community event in downtown Hingham. The Hingham Downtown Association, police, fire, DPW, HMLP, lots of staff and volunteers to pull that event off successfully and safely, so thank you. And congratulations to Talbets on their 75th anniversary. We celebrated that this weekend as well. And just a note that tomorrow is National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, and there is a remembrance event at the shipyard at 1:00 PM tomorrow, December 7, and it's free and open to the public, and certainly everyone is welcome. That's it.[1781.63]